Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium, October 7th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Kristen Rivers from the Wilberham Hampden Times is recording. Good evening, Kristen. Before we begin, I'd like to thank all those who participated in the Fall Fest, the volunteers who put it together, the vendors, the people who came. It really was a great event, a lot of people there. It's a testament to what a town can do if we all work together. Which brings me to the next topic of, we're always looking for volunteers for our boards and commissions, so feel free to sign up on the left here. Lauren will take your name. So, but again, it was a great event and we appreciate it. This Thursday, this Friday is Public Safety Night Out, sponsored by the Fire Department, Police Department, Action Ambulance, and there'll be fireworks afterwards at 7 o'clock.
Following on what Don said about the Fall Fest, Don was very concerned about it. I mean, every time we came forth with a food permit, Don was very attentive, saying he would be there to verify that everything they had in the permit was actually presented. And Don, your report, was that?
Everything was good. And Mrs. Davenport didn't notice that I, you know, I had to wipe my mouth before I got home.
No receipts to be submitted, though.
So it was a good event. The first item on our agenda is the minutes from September 23rd, 2024. We had the Cemetery Commission in to discuss the warrant article that they said spending they needed for maintenance. We discussed the employee benefits, increasing the life insurance. I was talking about the special town meeting. We had a little update on Thornton Burgess. We'll be meeting with the Bureau Committee on Thursday night this week. Building use policy was approved. And we, again, we issued some permits for the, for the Fall Fest and went through some correspondence. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hartspring contract renewal? How's it going?
Good. Want me to stand?
No.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Joan Shea. I'm Vice President of the Friends of the Hampden Senior Citizens. Claudia Capinos is here tonight with me. She's President. I'm here because our contract is up once again, but before we go into renewals, I wanted to give you some totals. For year 2023, we earned $2,775. Year to date, this year, we have taken in $2,735. I still don't have third quarter checkets due the end of this month. And again, the total for the two years is $5,510. Doing very well. I had a truck event Saturday and it was very successful. He brought in his biggest truck from Hartspring's foundation, which had the drop lift on it, which was perfect for the big, huge bags, literally, the people brought in that were heavy. And that truck, the driver told me, holds a total of 7,000 pounds and we filled it to the door from the bottom to the top. And so, and that check will be in the next quarter, which will be January, because it ends in December, so we won't get that till next year, but it goes along with my bin. The purple bin is in the parking lot at the Senior Center. I maintain it with help from everybody in the group. The office staff will let me know if somebody has something, if there's anything outside. I go up, someone in my family sees it, they pick it up. Sometimes I have my garage, well, literally, but it's very successful. And in talking to Becky, we would like to renew. Maybe Becky has something to say for the renewal.
Hi.
Right.
So, the contract has been a year-to-year contract and it's been very successful. So, every year you authorize me to sign that contract with Hartspring's and I'm wondering if you would allow me to sign a two-year contract with Hartspring's this year instead of just one year, so we don't waste your time next fall coming back in and doing the same thing. We could go on a two-year cycle if that's something. And obviously, if there are any issues or any problems that come up within that two-year cycle, we would certainly come in and we can address those, but we haven't had any problems to date. And so, if you would allow a two-year contract, then we would.
Is there an opportunity for an escalator in the second year or?
To roll it over.
Let me, if they're gonna offer, do they offer more? Is there a chance?
Price per pound go up for them? Did they give back?
Well, their contract is annual with us, but we're asking two-year from you, so that...
Just giving Becky authorization for two years.
Exactly.
Move to authorize.
I have to, excuse me, I have to say that oftentimes you see those bins, the clothes and everything are all over the place and that's consistently maintained and it's, there's never anything outside and that, I think that's really a good, really nice to see. I know it's your hard work and other people too, so I want to thank you for that.
Well, I think Joan runs an NX out of the garage, though, right? Don't go to Joan's garage, because you're gonna see something different there.
Do we need a second bin, you think? Would that help alleviate space in your garage?
We talked about it. One bin, I think, is plenty. It's enough to maintain.
Yeah. And you're still able, you're able to keep up with that?
Yeah.
And you're on, you're on a first-name basis with every driver already, aren't you?
No.
And I'll make a motion to authorize the Senior Center Director to sign a two-year contract.
Any second.
Was it two one-year contracts? Because they do one.
Yes.
You said two-year contracts, so she...
Two-year contracts.
Two yearly contracts. Two yearly contracts, okay, second.
Come on, yeah.
Thank you.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck, Joan.
What do we have here? Next item on the agenda is the finalize the warrant.
So I'll make a quick comment, Don.
Yeah.
So last week, we were talking about Article 19 and I think I made a motion to close the warrant, leaving that in basically contingent on 100 signatures being validated by the, the board of registrars. And I believe we've received information that was not, that did not happen. So I think it would be appropriate for the board, then, to say that the warrant is complete minus, which does not require opening of the warrant, basically modifying the warrant as stands without Article 19 and renumbering everything that follows. Craig, would you agree with that? That was our substance?
Yeah, we agreed to close the warrant pending certification of the signature for the petition, which was not certified, so removal of the article would be appropriate.
Our mind, the warrant does not include that one. It should be renumbered.
Correct.
So Brian, do we need a motion to remove Article 19 from the draft warrant?
Yeah, I think you, I think you need a motion to finalize the warrant without Article 19, because you wanna, that's, that's what your intention is.
Which does not require opening, because the closing required means no new articles.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to finalize the warrant without Article 19 and renumbering off following articles.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we have...
The signup sheet is still over there, you don't have...
So we have the article on the, so for the warrant now, we have name change for the Board of Selectmen, change town clerk from elected to appointed, combine elected treasurer and elected collector taxes. Those two will go, actually go on the ballot. If the town meeting votes in fair, those, that'll go on the ballot in May. Increase the Board of Selectmen from three to five. Establish revolving fund for electric vehicle charging and establish a limit on the expenses, expenditures from that account. And there's additional funding from the insurance count for employee benefits. Do we have a number for that yet?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be closer on 90,000. And that's mostly related to health insurance, current enrollment.
We gotta get that nailed down.
But Don, going back to six, though, again, I'm thinking from what I'm hearing that this is gonna be sooner rather than later. It's hooked up, so we really need to get a number in place for what we're gonna be charging, so they can program their software. So I think, I know, Brian, you've done some scoping around other towns. We saw the North Hampton thing, which I think was an outlier. I don't, it agrees with what we're talking. I thought we were in the 50 to 60 range was typical.
48 to 50, something.
Something like that, yeah.
Yep.
I think this needs to be unfortunate, because if they hook up, we need to be able to go. And we already have a revolving count, we authorize it on our own.
Yes.
Which is good.
Additional funding for the Police Department account, Korea, so that's $7,500.
Right.
Additional funding for the Cemetery Commission, they asked for $7,500, right? $7,500. Senior Center expansion, well, they'll come up with a number for that. Water District Expansion Phase Two.
I'm thinking we might have to put that off, just based on, take no action.
Not hearing back.
Yeah, no grant, yeah, no action.
So, can we even start on phase one? You got the survey done of the plants and stuff like that and that money's appropriate. Can we start putting that out as an RFQ or?
I think the thought was, though, that we can't start the project until we hear back about the grant funding, because if we start it without accepting the grant, we could lose the grant. Yeah, some minutia with the state.
What about the, the ARPA money? Don't we have to encumber that by December 31st?
We have to obligate that by December 31st.
Just obligate.
So, if, if we don't hear in the next couple of weeks from the, the One Stop for Growth Grant, we may wanna consider putting out, put out the bid documents with a, with an alternate and the alternate would be essentially Phase Two, so that if we did get the One Stop Grant, which would pay for the entire project, then that we, that can go forward at the same time. We were trying to hold off, because we were initially promised decisions by September. It's now October 7th, so we can't wait much longer because of that deadline.
No, but that sounds like if the potential is the One Stop comes through, we need a fallback plan for the rest of the ARPA money by the 31st. Like, if you're saying that One Stop could pay for the entire thing?
Yep.
We would have 300 plus.
I'm sorry, it would not pay for the entire thing. It will pay for all horizontal construction. So there is...
So the engineering costs would still be on us?
Yep.
Okay.
There's still a portion that, that could pay for the ARPA, I forgot about that, yeah.
Fire department, fire station hazardous materials abatement, that's asbestos, we wanna get out of there.
Is that 10?
They were talking about 10, 10,000. And the fire station generator installation?
There's some problems with that, I think Brian needs to check with the, there's maybe a thing with, there's a request to have stamp drawings that may increase the cost, things like that, so I think Brian needs to...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, yeah, Ed had some informal quotes and it's not gonna be far off from the original bid price that we got, so I think it's gonna be...
40,000?
We should go up, yeah, somewhere in the ballpark of probably 50,000, just to be safe.
Maybe we should just dig a trench to the one we had out back here and just run along the line.
Extension.
Put a breaker on it.
Extension.
Well, seriously, you can run that down.
What are we gonna do with that one? Sell it?
We need to run it down. I'll let this get up. I think you're moving this.
Electronic voting system purchase, we gotta figure that out. Thornton Burgess School Planning and Improvements, we gotta come up with a number there. CPA, that's gonna be the scoreboards, that's 20,000, but that's CPA money.
CPA money, yeah.
Okay. And then the National Grid Easement, that's for the EV station?
Yes.
And Maritorial for Battery Energy Storage Systems, that's a two-thirds vote on that.
Is that much of an explanation, I think, Don, or?
Yeah.
Is planning given up? Is this in general or zoning? Zoning.
So this is zoning.
And planning had a positive recommendation out here.
Planning had a positive recommendation, right, so. Article 19 is off. Then transfer from free cash to the usual housekeeping ones, transfer from free cash to tax rate, transfer from general stabilization to reduce the tax rate, and transfer from free cash to general stabilization. Okay.
I don't think that, what we need coordinated with the assessments, I don't think we have any idea from them right now. They're still going through the thing, yeah.
So we're gonna sign seven of these.
Yes.
So they can...
Sign the back page only.
Back page only.
Yeah. Just so people know, we have, I believe, just over 900,000 certified free cash and I think the articles we saw at this point were under 200 with some question marks after that. So the balance will be used to reduce the tax rate, go into stabilization like that, like you've seen in years past. Tom, yes?
The thing is that in the past, we've had one town meeting in the spring and then in the fall, it was sort of a record keeping kind of, just get things going. We're gonna change the two town meetings, maybe we can change our, our guiding principles, so people know there were going to be two town meetings. Or we should go back to one town meeting and the second town meeting would just stay clerical, you know, correcting financial issues and stuff like that. Because these issues that are being brought up now, the number of people that attend this town meeting is much smaller than in the spring. In the spring, we get a couple hundred people and in this one, we probably get a hundred people or so. So I would like to suggest that either we switch to and make everybody aware that there will be two every year, or we go back to a line with the second one being corrected.
Well, we've actually taken the calling, calling this one the Fall Town Meeting rather than the Special Town Meeting.
I can't remember the year we didn't have.
Yeah. And it, running a town government is getting increasingly, running town government is getting increasingly complicated and, you know, these things go up, like for instance, an example is with the, with the Water District Expansion, we had, they had told us that we'd get an answer in September and here we are in October, so these things drag out for a period of time to get it. But I, I think you'll see in the future that we will be having two, a spring and a fall town meeting to just...
And maybe we should tell the public that.
Yeah.
Prepare for two town meetings and the one in the fall is just as expensive, just as important as the one in the spring. So they don't just go to the one in the spring, they'll go to the next, take care of the whole town.
You're signing that. Next thing we have on our agenda is Allen and May Street Passing Zones.
Talking to Mark about that, he's, he asked if I, oh, she bring it to the board and I suggested he does. I think we got rid of, we got rid of a traffic zone, a passing zone under Jeff a while back and I think this is an agreement, Scott would like to see them gone. It's more work for him. So, looking for validation from the board, go ahead.
So what, what he's asking is converting the passing zone on Allen Street by the, by the Police Department, the Senior Center into a no-pass zone with solid double lines and also convert the passing zone on Main Street from Fisher Lane to Laughing Brook for a no-pass zone as well. He says, I think there are many advantages doing this in both occasions. And this, it's the...
We did it on Stony Hill over the years ago.
And the police chief supports that.
Right. Which I think the only one left would be Main Street.
It is a little bit done, Main Street.
Main Street, that's about it, yeah. Is there a little Islam metal still? Used to be.
I don't think there is now.
I don't think it matters, they pass anyhow.
Back to the Highway Department thing, somebody asked me why we didn't take this opportunity when doing Mill Road to straighten out the little bridge. And my answer was, do you know what would happen? It would turn to a 70 mile an hour thruway if that bridge wasn't there to slow people down. Honestly, it would. We've seen it on every road. When we repaved Scannick Road, people loved it for a week and a week later, it was like, oh my gosh, you won't believe how fast they go down that road. You could say that little curve there with that bridge is the cheapest speed bump we have in town.
Yes.
So I guess question, authorize the, the Highway Superintendent to convert the passing zones to non-passing zones per his request.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We got, what's it called, Bill House 4885, this is yours, you have something to discuss.
Yeah, I asked to have this on.
4,000 bills this year already?
What's that?
They've done 4,000 bills this year already?
They just keep renumbering all the old bills, so people get confused and stop following them, but. So I kinda wrote a prepared statement, so if you indulge me to, go ahead and read it.
Go ahead.
All right, so on October 2nd, our Governor Maura Healey signed an emergency preamble on House Bill 4885, enact modernizing firearm laws, putting it into effect immediately, essentially making constitutionally protected, law-abiding citizens criminals and at the same, already some of the strictest fire control laws we have in the country. Bill H. 4885 was originally signed by the Governor on July 25th and at that time was not deemed an emergency, but a legislature who passed the bill. By state statute, the bill would have officially become law 90 days later, which would have been October 23rd, 2024, unless petitioned by the citizens of the Commonwealth. Since the time of the original bill signing, a grassroots campaign was formed to legally and constitutionally petition the legislature, getting the required 50,000-plus registered voter signatures to put a pause on the bill, amending it to stop and becoming law until voted on by the people of the Commonwealth at the next state election in 2026. By deciding of this bill as an emergency preamble, Governor Healey has taken away the democratic process from the citizens of the Commonwealth who were petitioning and forcing a law into effect both unconstitutionally and now skirting the rights of democracy via loophole. Bill H. 4885 is ambiguously vague and is full of regulations that must be followed, yet no guidelines exist and in some cases won't be available for another 18 months, while commissions are formed to review the procedures. Within Bill H. 4885, there's a list of prohibited places, of which are local municipal buildings, its grounds and parking areas, preventing individuals who have been fully vetted locally and had extensive federal background checks already performed are now barred from exercising their constitutional rights. However, within Section 124, there is a provision that allows municipalities to opt out of the restricted places list. Given the rural nature of Hampden and the rights of the citizens who live here, I do not want to infringe on their rights as they go about their daily businesses in this small rural town. So therefore, I would move the Town of Hampden opt out of the restricted places list per Section 124 in Chapter 135 of the Acts of 2024.
Does a motion?
That's a motion.
I haven't read the Act, so I don't know what we're opting out of, per se. I appreciate Craig's comments and if the Chair would put it on for the next agenda, so I can read what you're referring to.
I mean, it was on the agenda to go over it, so, I mean, that's kind of where I kinda wanna stand with it right now.
Is the, what's the other areas that we, if we opt out, what are the other areas?
That's the only area we're opting out of. There's, the whole bill stays in, but that's the only clause given to municipalities to govern. You know, currently...
I understand what you're saying. I'm saying, I haven't read the bill. I know it was on the agenda. We had other things, the agenda was published on Thursday. And you're asking us to make a stand on this.
I'm asked to uphold the constitutional rights of the citizens of this town.
I understand that. I'd like to see what the bill says and then agree with you.
I don't think that's asking a lot, too. You were asking us to sign onto something.
Can you read the list of municipal buildings?
Any municipal building.
Can you read the list of municipal buildings?
Town Hall.
No, from, from the Governor's bill, like, does that include school buildings?
School buildings are already a different statute, so it's not part of the list.
Even the grounds?
The grounds are already part of the different statute.
That's because it considers the local.
Yeah. So it has nothing to do with this stopped out. So school zones are nothing, are completely different. This is just municipal buildings where municipal business is taken care of, so.
It's not including the post office and the federal?
That's a federal statute, which is completely different. So it's Academy Hall, Town Hall and pretty much Fire, Police, E W.
Highway Department.
Highway Department, yeah.
Senior Center.
Okay. So more or less, my thoughts are, people come through to town, we live in a rural area, people are exercising their constitutional rights, you know, they'll be breaking the law by coming in here to go to the clerk's office to get paperwork or do whatever.
With a firearm?
Mm-hmm.
Even if they have a permit for it?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't seem right. Anybody here, Karen?
I mean, what you say, pardon me, Craig, what you say makes the most sense in the world. That's what I just wanted to, like...
No, no, I didn't understand your concept, you know, but it's, it's, it's not in the books now and it hasn't been. We already have some of the strictest firearm laws in the country, so it's just more of an infringement on the people's rights.
It may be just a symbolic gesture, but I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jack?
I agree.
I said, it may be just a symbolic gesture, because it's very limiting, what you're proposing, but it also lets people know that this is what we, as a rural town, believe in, that there's gotta be some reasonability to this.
Right, and it all starts with small rural towns like us that helped shape the rest of the coun, the rest of the state.
It doesn't negate, because I understand what you're saying, it doesn't negate the bill as far as it's over.
And that we can't do.
We're not going to have even more limitations in terms of our second amendment.
Correct.
Joyce?
That bill was changed three times before she signed it. So you're telling me now it's back to the 4885?
4885, yeah.
That's the one?
That, that's the bill. It's actually Chapter 135, the Acts of 2024, is what it's called now by law.
And that, you know, you know, it was political, all of it was about political, they covered it in there at night when we were all sleeping. She did whatever she wanted. But that's not it.
Maura?
Don't leave it behind. Don't leave it mentioned to you to take into consideration, Don, is A, you knew that this meeting had to be closed and you shouldn't have come here by reading that, because a lot of us did that prior to the meeting, but we also have the option, if you guys opt now, to, it's not just like taking a stance, but thinking about the community and what maybe the, the community might want, you can go back and make that change. Because once you vote for it, you have the words to go back, bring it back to your group to then make that, to recall it and change that vote. I just think you should take that into consideration, though, because...
All right. Well, on the face of it, I think, you know, Craig, there's a powerful argument here. I think the rights of the people are pretty paramount and I'll go ahead and second this motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go.
As a, out of curiosity, is that why most of you are here tonight? Or is it for other topics? Okay. Well, Maura, you've been here forever.
It's the Health IMA that we really wanna know about.
They're here for the show. We have the Health IMA we're putting off, they don't...
It's not.
We're waiting for Town Council.
Yep.
And then we have the signing of the 2024 State Election Warrant. We have to sign seven copies. We have a, we have a food permit.
For the, not, not leftover from, somebody didn't like?
This is retroactive.
This is for tomorrow, for, for Friday?
For Friday.
Are we doing the, the warrant first or?
Just, just get that out of the way a little bit. What you're saying is right.
So this is, if you remember last year, they had that event, the fundraiser up at the starting gate. You're gonna see a number of these coming forward and it was called that, I believe, Babes for a Cause, Shop for a Reason. So that's gonna be on November 30th and this is the first many to come, I'm sure, the Stout Pigeon Coffee Company.
Stout?
You love their stuff.
The Stout Pigeon what?
Coffee Company. Come on, Don.
Second. I'll make a motion, I'd like you to permit for the Stout Pigeon Coffee Company.
Craig already did it.
Oh, you already did it? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, you want to require samples first, right?
A little skeptical of the pigeon thing.
On behalf of the.
Where they getting the pigeons?
Kearns Falls, who knows?
All right, anything else over there? They had, they had, they had, I mean, many last year up there.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, it was 35.
All right, do you have the warrant? We'll be signing the warrant for the state election, and they'll be voting for, as we know, electors for president and vice president, Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Governors, Consulars, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, Clerk of Courts, Registered Deeds, and there's four, uh, five questions, five questions on the ballot, so it'll be a lengthy process. I encourage you to vote, take, take advantage of early voting, because it'll, it'll, you know, be a big turnout, so. All right? We got to sign seven of these? Is this just a signature sheet here?
Yeah.
Do we have to vote? You sign it, right?
I think you should take a vote to put the election warrant, yeah.
Make a motion to authorize the board to sign the election warrant for 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Donna, are you going to make sure there's going to be voting signatures? Do you make sure there's going to be voting signatures?
Is Eva still down there?
Yes, yes. Oh, oh, how come there's six lines there? Oh, because some, they have, okay. So city councils, right?
Seven total?
Seven.
This is just our copy, copy.
Yeah. While we're doing this, we have, do we have a selectmen's reports?
Looking for, we had a building committee meeting this morning, at the senior center building, we have a forum on Wednesday night, encourage as many people as possible to attend. That's at the senior center. Wednesday night also, busy night in town, we have a planning board meeting, and let's see, COA board meeting is tomorrow morning. That's pretty much it.
Okay, the master plan committee has received the first draft of the master plan, chapter by chapter, which will be going over on Wednesday morning, and the, the selectmen will be meeting with the Hamden William Regional School District on Thursday? Thursday evening, they'll further discuss the lease at Thornton Burgess School.
Will that be at the IRC or the library, Don?
That's at the, it's at the IRC. What do you got?
I have nothing to report.
Don, administrative report?
Hey, Don, one quick thing. So, as everyone knows, we have a, looking at a process to take back Thornton Burgess and potentially turn it into the new town hall, or new town hall. I was talking to people, a potential fundraiser for that, and seeing a certain age here. I would like to buy your locker back. What do you think? If it happens, I think we should offer the lockers to, I want 578. So try to remember your number, I'm giving you plenty of time.
So whatever it's, if there's two to one.
That's a great quiet mill. Locks here, I like that, there you go.
Don, administrative report?
Uh, do you mention 10, uh, 10-15, having the joint finance meeting? That'll be the next one for me, Tuesday, right?
Well, we, we may change it up to 10-16.
10-16? Uh, 10-15 is Tuesday, Tuesday the 15th, right?
Yeah, Greg can't make it.
I'm not available today.
Okay, good, never mind about that. Advisory hearing for special town meeting is going to be the 21st. And continuing on the Thornton Burgess theme, I'm going to be walking through the building with Parks and Rec and Library, look at those, those unique spaces within the building to see if they.
What day?
To see how that might fit in with everybody's plans, so the 16th.
16.
Later this week, I'll, the casino mitigation grant program stopped revamping their reporting system, so I'm going to attend a webinar for that, and I'm working on the two-factor authentication for the emails, to make sure that our emails are the most secure possible for a reasonable price. That's about it, and we'll finalize the, get the warrant posted.
As far as that casino mitigation, can we try to reapply for those traffic lights on Main Street we talked about? Are they still going to deny that?
So in, in my conversations with them, they would pay a percentage of it equal to what they feel like is their impact on traffic, which was, oh, wow, I don't hold back on my opinion, but.
I don't remember that being part of the agreement.
Oh, the original agreement?
What they feel is appropriate.
Yeah. Well, that's what they told me, so. In, in every year, the, the grant comes around again, they suggested that we look at economic development towards a base, but that'll come up in January.
We still have a shortfall on the other signs already, right? From the casino thing, we were short 13, 14,000?
Yeah.
The last mitigation payment?
Yeah, because there was some engineering work that was done on, for that crossing.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe to clean that up, we should just don't thread the money out of our, but just to clean that account up. It was mentioned that, and I think Clip brought this up, because we're talking about fundraising for the senior center project, and just to report, the Friends of Seniors have authorized six-figure number towards the project from their reserve.
Good.
But Clip did mention there's money left over from the police station project that hasn't been swept by the town yet. So I think maybe during our meeting next week, Don, that might be a question, hey, can we go over any old accounts that we need to take care of?
Oh, on one thing, do you want to mention electronic voting at town meeting?
Yes.
Do we have a group here?
Yes.
The biggest.
Well, we have half a town meeting here right now, so.
Right. The board has agreed to try out electronic voting at town meeting through an electronic clicker system. So the setup will be that there'll be, as the, as the motion's made, the motion will appear on a screen, the moderator will open, I don't know what the period of time will be, 30 seconds, 20 seconds, and then there's these small clicker things that look like, I don't know, like they're a small remote, really, and has yes, no, abstain on it, and then if you click during the, during the voting period, you click yes, no, or abstain, you can change your vote. Anytime that the vote is open, your clicker will read okay, then once it's closed, the votes will display up on the screen. So we're going to try that out for this upcoming town meeting and see how it goes.
Somebody asked me if there was going to be a, an example beforehand, I said no, but I believe we'll be doing a couple of test questions at the beginning of town meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Will the Red Sox ever win again? Yes.
No. What about the Patriots?
Huh?
What about the Patriots?
Hockey season right now.
The ones that are out of jail?
Yeah, it's hockey season.
It's hockey season.
Anything else to come before the board? Yes?
One question. So in terms of Great Horse, when can they bring that back to the selectmen again?
Their, their next thing that they could possibly do is obtain 200 signatures to, and that would force us to a special town meeting for that.
And what timeframe do they have?
Any timeframe they want.
So how do we get notified of that? Because for me, being at that last few meetings, I'm a little concerned now I don't see the attorney here.
90 days? 90 days from when they file?
Forty, or they have, the one, from the time, from the time they get, if they get the signatures, they have to be certified, and then the, the selectmen have to call a special town meeting within 45 days of that, which is.
Anybody can do.
Which anyone can do. I mean, anyone, anyone can petition for a special town meeting for anything, under that thing, so.
So like the last time when he brought the signatures and didn't have them certified, and we allowed him to get them certified after, does this time he has to have them certified before he brings them to the selectmen?
No, he brings them to the selectmen, and the selectmen have to give them to the town clerk.
Because as a, as a citizen, I'm a little concerned that he's a lawyer, he gave these, he didn't know that he was going to have 100 certified signatures. And I think that's, for me, that's the concern, I feel like this is really shady, and he's trying, they're trying to undermine us again.
They're not here tonight, why?
They were on Zoom.
They were here.
Oh, they are on Zoom?
They were on Zoom.
Was.
But they were here.
But, so he was on Zoom.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So that, that's the first option, the 200 signatures.
The, the options, the options people have, the selectmen set the warrant, but, but, as a balance, you know, if you had to bore a selectman, it just aren't going to put anything on the warrant that you want. You have three options. If you go to a regular town meeting, you have to get 10 signatures. A special town meeting, you have to get 100, or you could force a special town meeting by getting 200 registered voters with, for that specific item on there. And once, if they get 200 signatures, then within 45 days, we have to call it, we have to call a special town meeting.
So those signatures of 200, there's no timeframe, he can, he can come at any time?
Yes, anytime, right.
Yeah, anybody.
Yes.
I'm just not knowledgeable on this stuff. He needs 200, they need 200 signatures from people who reside here in this town?
Registered voters, no. From Hamden, from Hamden.
How many? Now, they don't know. But how many people in town belong to Great Horse?
I have no idea.
I don't know any answer.
They have to reasonably regularly. You can't, you can't force them on anything, you have to reasonably regulate. So they're following the mass laws.
Yeah. I don't like laws.
I'm not saying they're rude, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How do I know if my name shows up on their list?
If you're registered voters, a town clerk would have your name.
But how do I know if my name shows up on their petition?
Like they faked your signature, me?
Yeah.
Their public record, you're welcome to request it.
Your public record, you can come in and check.
So the petition is public record?
Yeah, you can look at it, yeah.
But, but they're certifying it after they brought it to you guys and called.
Correct, that's what the law.
So it comes to us first, we give it to the town, if it has 200 signatures, we give it to the town clerk. The town clerk certifies that the person's a registered voter.
So the final decision is made until it's been certified, correct?
Right, if it's, if they gets 200 signatures, we have no decision to make. By law, we have to put it on.
But you have a decision to make.
We have to call the town meeting.
To call the meeting, so we know.
Yeah, right, we have 45 days, 45 days, right.
So that way it gets on a ballot?
It gets on a town meeting.
A town meeting first, and then the town meeting does what?
The town meeting, so, so if it's the zone change, then the, then the town meeting votes on the zone change, whether they approve the zone change or not. And the zone, for the zone change to pass, it has to have two-thirds vote.
He's got to keep pushing and pushing, pushing for years, and he's got to push and push to get what he wants, because he doesn't know what it's like to not get what he wants.
Anyhow, that's, that's the rule.
Actually, Don, is it two different things? The 200 signatures calls the town meeting, would they still need 100 signatures to put an article on?
No, no, that.
The 200?
I don't know.
That's what I'm saying.
No, it's 200.
For both?
For both.
Does both things?
Okay. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Can we put out a notice once he gets 200, 200, and it goes to be verified, so we can check and make sure our names aren't on there? I don't know. We can load that.
I've never heard that question.
You're going to call it, you're going to pass the zone change if they have the 200, then he's going to verify it. It just seems.
No, 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 no.
The 200 just calls a town meeting, that's all.
The 200 calls a town meeting, yeah.
Then you all come to the town meeting.
You all come to the town meeting and vote.
Yeah.
And vote no.
Don, I, I thought this was a done deal seven years ago, so I'm really surprised that this is up again. So say if the Great Horse, say if the zoning doesn't change, right, because of an election or, you know.
Yeah, right.
So does that mean that in seven years, they can try it again? Or what, like, how often can they try to do this?
If the, if, it all depends, all right? So if the, if the planning board issues a negative report, all right, negative says we, we don't agree with the zone change, and they recommend it to the town meeting, and it doesn't pass town meeting, then they can't come back for two years. If the planning board doesn't issue a negative report, does nothing, or issues a fair report, and it passes, and it doesn't pass a town meeting, they can come back at the next town meeting or the next special town meeting, or, you know, so. The only stipulation is that if, if the planning board recommends a negative action, then, and it doesn't pass a town meeting, then they have to wait two years.
How often can they petition with the 200 signatures?